Item three is items removed, added, or changed. We do want to move item number thirteen up to just prior item number six as they're both kind of similar subjects and they need to be talked about at the same time. Do we have anything else, Lord?
No.
Okay. Item four matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Item five consent agenda. We have one item and that is the September and October 2018 city council financial reports. Anybody have any questions on those? You have time to review them. Okay, can we get a motion to recommend a city council?
So moved.
Motion by Chanzik.
Second.
By Metzler. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. That'll go on to the city council consent agenda. Item number thirteen, which is now going to be just prior item number six, which is resolution eighteen dash one thirty-two dash R authorizing change order number seven with Williams Brothers Incorporated for Phase One wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. Alderman, Chanzik, as Vice Chairman of Public Utilities, you want to start us out with it?
Yeah, so I figure we would just discuss that with the monthly update because we're going to go through what the changes are anyways.
Yeah, I think Jerry is the one that put together these CMRs and stuff, so he can address.
Yeah, I just figured it'd just be part of it. So we can just go right into the presentation.
Okay, so let's go right into it, Jerry. We'll do the change order and the wastewater treatment plant at the same time.
Tap it. It doesn't sound like it's on.
Doesn't look like it's.
It's not plugged in.
Or that helps.
Engineer, Jerry.
He can't plug it in.
Usually these things are set up before I get here. I don't have to think. Okay, thank you for the introduction. I'm going to bring up my presentation here. All right, update covering the month of November for the project down at the wastewater treatment plant Phase One rehabilitation. Since the last time we spoke, there has been, of course, ongoing work inside our two main structures down there, the main building and the digester operations building. The overhead doors have been put on the main building, so we have an enclosed space. We have power to the buildings, so we're starting to get items like the gas-fired unit heaters and the rest of the HVAC going inside that really helps the conditions in there, so we're taking out, hopefully in the very near future, the temporary heating systems. Finished work has been going on, like ceiling tiles, ceramic tile in the bathroom and locker rooms, paint on the walls. I mentioned that the main switchboard is energized. That will tie into over the next couple of weeks, the transfer of power over from the existing main power feed that's down at the south end of the plant in the Sledge Hailing Building to the new power feed up at the north end. That includes a lot of plant shutdowns where, over a period of several hours, they will be transferring power over from the backup generator from that old building to the new building so that the wastewater treatment plant will not be without emergency backup power for any extended period of time longer than a day. And we've been working with the electrical subcontractor on how to do that specifically. We've also been working, or the contractor's been working in the digester operations building. The flare construction has been going on. The waste gas burner burns off excess methane that's produced from the digesters. So equipment pad and piping and control panels have been installed for that, as well as MEPs in the digester operations building and process piping installation. Site work, last time we spoke, I told you that we were going to pave. Well, we paved. We paved down at the south end. Before that, we had finished curb and gutter, and we've also done a little bit more sidewalk work. Requires temporary heating and things like that to make sure that the concrete cures properly, and the contractor has been providing that. As far as costs, this is as per our latest pay request, total including construction and engineering costs of $26,100,000. Estimated progress based on the contractor's latest submitted schedule update, which was just about a month ago, they submit on the fifteenth, was, will be eighty-six percent. I don't know what their new date for final completion will be, so next time we speak in January, I'll have an updated number for that. As far as change orders, like I was introduced with, change order number seven is on the docket today. Change order number seven for just over $28,000 covers a number of CMRs and includes $28,000 and a day of time extension. Just to address the day of time extension first, it was for work that was done to a process which we had already declared substantially complete. Some piping rework had to be done to prevent some off spray of some chemicals. So found that during the loading of ferrochloride into these chemical tanks, the tankers would often blow off all of their product into the basins. When they did, it misted. That mist got on the top of the tanks, and we didn't want that anymore. So we decided to change the piping around, and that's what the extra day is for. Let's see. Were there any questions before I get into too much into the weeds with the CMR? There's, I believe, twelve to fifteen CMRs that are covered by this change order. The largest one is revisions that we made to the bike path at Flynn and Shumway. And actually, if I could pull this up here. So right at the bottom of the screen here is the result of that CMR. What we did was we eased the turn coming off that bridge of Clark Island onto that side of the river, give it a little bit more of a turn. We also, as part of the CMR that hasn't been done yet, we're going to be installing a four-foot-tall fence along curb line to direct traffic, more obviously, to the north as you come off that bridge, so that people don't come off the bike path and hop the curb in front of the north gate that will eventually also be constructed there.
Where's the gate going to be located in reference to like the front of the building and that bridge?
There's a van basically right in line with the bridge. Backside of that van. It's going to be where the.
So it'll be further back.
Any further questions? And I will move on. There we go. All right. Oh, with this change order, we are at 1.4% of the construction value. Just wanted to throw that out there. Schedule, this is nothing new to you guys. You saw this last time, eighty-three days behind. In November, we added the one day, which is a part of the actually current now change order number seven, but they lost twenty-five days on critical path work. I don't foresee there being, I don't know what he's going to come at me with in a couple of days when he gives me his schedule update. He's given, the contractor has provided us with a list of startup, a calendar for startup of equipment in the whole project. That leads us through the end of January. So as you can see here, he is saying that he's calculating his substantial completion in the beginning of January. That's going to be the end of January. So with the best information I have, we're probably going to see another three to four week delay on his part that is obviously going to bump up the liquidated damages that are going to be enforced against him. I had mentioned that one of the more crucial things about the project is the power, getting the electrical systems up and running. That's still true. The contractor has been working Saturdays and longer days during the week, the electrical subcontractors specifically, in order to address those issues and try to progress. They've also brought on an additional superintendent now that should be able to assist with coordination, and I think this is one of the better steps forward that they've taken, but we're not there yet. So are there any questions on schedule?
You did tell that we don't have a tremendous appetite for negotiating, right?
The number hasn't changed. We said in the pre-bid meeting and the pre-con meeting that LDs will be enforced, and I have the data to back up the numbers that we have.
We briefly chatted about that last month, so I just want to make sure.
Yes. Yep. I can mention it again in tomorrow morning's meeting just to make sure. As far as photos, the main building, this was last month, there's not a whole lot of change, aside from a little bit of minor landscaping to this building exterior. This is on the south face, and again, not a whole lot of change. You'll see that we have all of the doors, not just two, installed now, those larger overhead doors. Inside, things like mockups have taken place. This was actually just before I spoke with you last time. Flagpoles in the front have been constructed, so those are just one of the minor things, the details that have to get done. Process piping connections have continued. This is one of two dewatering centrifuges that are in the upstairs, the second level of that main building up at the north end. Again, more tile in the main building. This is the, one of the restrooms. HVAC, this is actually a fan coil that will condition and cool the space, so not necessarily required right now, but on the list of things that have to get done. These are the hydraulic units for the centrifuge. There's a lot of components that go into the processes that we're doing to this building, so we're getting down into the brass tacks of getting these systems started up. Each one of these control panels controls one of those centrifuges, so there's a lot of power and controls that go into these systems. As far as the digester operations building goes, last month, no pavement. This month, pavement. So we have something to plow against. It makes access for city staff tremendously easier and better, especially for grabbing samples and getting around to maintain the systems of the plant. This is one of the boiler heat exchangers that we're putting in that's going to be heating the digesters and keeping that system going and at the right temperature. This is the pavement that was going on on the twenty-first, I believe. This is one of the electrical components. This is the motor control center in the digester operations building that was delivered and installed within the last couple of weeks. So that is the update for the Batavia Phase One rehabilitation. If you have any further questions?
Have they given you any other update on when the rest of the windows are going to be in, so the building will be what I'll call secured?
Windows were supposed to be shipped on the fifth, and I haven't seen them yet.
Because you've got, what, half the downstairs ones in?
The downstairs ones are in. The downstairs ones weren't the issue. The issue were the curved.
Upstairs.
Yeah, and slightly tinted glass of the upstairs.
Any other questions? Any questions on the change order? Okay, then I think, Dan, you needed to get a motion on the change order.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution eighteen one thirty-two R authorizing change order number seven for Phase One of the project.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll that on consent.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, so that takes care of item number six and item number thirteen, so now we'll go to item number seven, which is ordinance eighteen dash seventy-nine requesting a transfer of certain parcel from the Batavia Park District. And Alderman and Stark, do you have that?
I do. So as we have talked about in the past, when we talk about the parking lot that is behind the Tomley Building and all of that area in there, and we talk about how it's been split ownership, we have also talked about doing a transfer of land between the park district and the city of Batavia, in essence, doing a land swap for comparably sized properties that, where it made sense. And so community development has figured out an area that the park district wants, and we want the lot over behind the Tomley Building. It's comparable in size. The parcel behind the Tomley Building area is about a half an acre. No, I've got it backwards. No, the building, the parking lot that we would be giving to the park district, which is over near their building at the east side community, sorry, the west side park district building, is about a half an acre in size and has forty-three parking spaces, and it's regularly used for the community center and the administration building by their employees and the patrons. And it's right near the mobile station. However, we would retain the lot east of that lot, including the alley that's just west of the mobile station on Batavia Avenue, so we wouldn't be giving them all of our ownership over there, just part of it. And then in return, we would be getting the lot behind the Tomley Building adjacent to the Marconi Lot that has legal access via Webster Street in the city's public alley. It makes sense for us to keep that now and use that as a city lot. And the district, the park district, though, is going to retain the Fox River footage and the adjacent bike path, so we're not taking over the bike path, we're not taking over the river footage. And that parcel is about a third of an acre and contains thirty-one parking places, so we're giving them a slightly bigger lot in the trade. So the ordinance that was attached to the memo talks about the transfer. The city has utilities that run through the area. We're going to reserve an easement over the land being transferred for access for the maintenance of the utilities. And so the pros, of course, are approving the ordinance and resolution will allow the land swap to proceed, and it obviously makes more sense for us to own the one we need and them to have one that's closer to their building. The cons, the city will lose direct control over the areas conveyed. The budget impact, there's a survey cost of $1,600 in additional fees for recording that are going to be split between the park district and the city, and there's no staffing impact other than time, because time does have value. Laura?
Thank you, Susan.
So does anyone have any questions about this?
I just wanted, can we go back to the other parking lot that's behind the park district? Just for clarity, the only piece that the city owns right about where he's got the marker up there in the alley is about the last ten or twelve feet right up there. That whole lane where the two cars are sitting there, that's not owned by the city. That's part of Mobil's lot, just for clarity, so we know that, that the access to this legally now is just through the front off of Batavia Avenue.
You're talking about where you park cars after they're completed and to be picked up?
When that was actually surveyed, we owned a lot more of it than Stan thought he did.
Okay.
So just, so you're aware, I mean, we're not, there's no problem now, but if ownership ever changes that property, the access to that could go to the new property owner. So I don't think there's any kind of right of way or city access or.
Yeah, the city owns the, what's been called the Newton House lot.
Right.
And then part of the access is off of Batavia Avenue, but we also do own a strip of land. This may not be representative exactly where it is.
Right.
You know, the discrepancies.
It's pretty close to where that line is that's on there. It's not, it's not half of it.
Right, yeah, it's less, the whole paved area, we don't own the entire paved area. That's correct.
Just so everybody understands that. But I don't think we're ever going to have a problem with the park district allowing access through it either, and I think this actually works out better for us because plowing wise, there's a lot easier ways to get rid of the snow down behind that parking lot along the river than there is in this parking lot.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, that was easy. I'll make a motion that we recommend a city council ordinance eighteen seventy-nine requesting transfer of a certain parcel from the Batavia Park District.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by McFadden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Consent.
Yeah. And then also, I make a motion that we recommend a city council resolution eighteen one thirty-one R authorizing the transfer of property to the Batavia Park District.
Second.
A motion by Stark, second by McFadden. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also carries.
Consent as well. Item number nine, resolution eighteen dash one twenty-nine R approving the preliminary final plan of subdivision for Farmstead Three Unit Two subdivision. Alderman and Stark.
That's okay. On November fourteenth, the plant commission conducted design review for two speculative industrial buildings on Nagel Boulevard, and the commission reviewed the preliminary and final plan of subdivision that would divide the currently unsubdivided land into two lots with easements for the development. The draft resolution eighteen one twenty-nine would approve the subdivision and authorize signatures of the mayor and city clerk for the plat. And so basically, we are taking, by this ordinance, we would take this single lot and divide it in two. And the pros, the action's going to make two lots to facilitate development of two different buildings that have received design review approval. There's no cons, there's no budget impact, there's no additional staffing impact, there's no required timeline. If we approve this now, it'll go on the city council agenda for December seventeenth. Plant commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the plat of subdivision, subject to any conditions that were specified in resolution eighteen one twenty-nine R. Anybody have any questions about this one? Okay, I'll make the motion that we send on a city council resolution eighteen one twenty-nine R, resolution approving the preliminary final plan of subdivision for Farmstead Three Unit Two subdivision, fourteen twenty-five, fourteen seventy-five Nagel Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Item number ten, discussion which is about the request for signed cost reimbursement for twenty-one fifty Main Street property. Alderman and Stark.
This one was very, very interesting. I had to read this twice to make sure I understood this correctly. So the new Crash Champion owners in September said they wanted to put up a monument sign and that any of the people in that adjacent area who wanted to be on the monument sign would be on the monument side. The city owns a parcel of land in there, so in my thinking, the city wouldn't want to buy a piece of the monument side, but I guess that's not exactly what Crash Champions thought. And so they'd kind of like an upfront payment of $13,178.75 to keep this, that section of the sign blank for whoever the city sells the lot to. Now, the upside is, the city has someone who's interested in purchasing that lot. So one of our, oh, and $13,000 is not budgeted because we didn't know we'd have to pay for it upfront. So what could happen is, we could proceed with the payment for our blank part of the sign, or we could not proceed with the payment and defer it over to the proposed purchaser. We could not proceed with the payment and offer credit to the purchase price of the twenty-one fifty Main Street parcel. Take no action, as we were never advised to make the payment upfront for the signage. So the pros, of course, will ensure ownership of a block of that sign for whoever buys it from the city. The cons, of course, it's an unbudgeted expense. The budget impact would be that we'd have to find $13,178. There's no impact on staffing. But my favorite part of this memo is number five. Action is at the discretion of the committee. Staff wants no part of this one. So take your pick of the options and come up with the best one. Does anyone have any comments about this one? Elliot?
I see no reason why we should be paying $13,178.75 for something we never agreed to.
I agree.
Did we approve the sign out there?
Well, let me clarify that a little bit. I mean, when we, when they came forward with the variance, we asked for a space to be reserved for somebody who would be buying our property in the future so that they would have tenant space. Otherwise, this lot wouldn't have any advertising space whatsoever on Randall or on Main Street. So we never committed to paying for that, but, you know, we had asked for them to reserve that as part of a future sign improvement.
I guess, if you look at it that way, I mean, so there's a blank spot on the sign. Who's going to, if there's no additional businesses to put a thing in there, it's going to stay blank anyway, so then it's open for the person who buys the lot from the city anyway. So I just say do nothing and say, I'm sorry, we're not paying you $13,000, but that's just my opinion. Anyone else have any thoughts on this?
I'm assuming then that the guy that buys a lot from us will end up paying them the $13,178 to get.
Which they should do. I mean, it's part of doing business is to put a sign out on your monument sign. I'm sure any other business up and down Randall Road has paid for their space on a monument sign.
I mean, I think that should be our response to this Crash Champions folks, so that we're not just totally disregarding them, that we're suggesting that when a viable business shows up, I think there is one, by the way.
Yeah.
And wants to buy it, that they'll be expected to pay that sign amount.
No, I see that there are five spots on that sign, but there's actually a sixth lot out there and another building.
That's another.
But where do they put that on the sign? If we didn't approve the sign with six spaces, there isn't a space for the empty building that's out there today.
Well, the idea was that this is primarily meant for lots that don't have signage, either the ability to put signage on Randall or Main, or that they did not already have signage on Randall or Main. So I think the one that was the, not the.
The Tuffy is on.
Tuffy, Tuffy's on Randall, but they don't have any actual signage on Randall.
It's on their building.
Right. Discount Tire was the one, yeah, thank you.
That building, that's the one I'm talking about that's empty out there. There's no space on the sign.
So they would end up putting up a Randall sign.
Okay. Oh, they do out there, okay. So they could just repurpose that for.
Right.
Okay.
So what could happen, though, I'm just speculating, what could happen is say whoever comes in and buys the Discount Tire building could purchase this space through Crash Champions, and that would mean then that the land that we're trying to sell wouldn't have sign ability.
Well, they have the ability to put a sign on Randall Road, and so the idea behind it, and I believe the variance, I'd have to go back and look and see the exact wording in the variance, but I think the variance actually defined who was supposed to get signage on here. So I think it said that it was only for tenants that did not have Randall or Main frontage or did not already have existing signage on Randall or Main.
And you said that you asked them to reserve it for us.
Correct. We had asked for it to be reserved.
Well, would it be reserved? Because couldn't somebody else go ahead and fill that empty spot? The way you're, the way you're explaining the variance is written, somebody else could fill that empty spot. Therefore, when somebody does purchase the property that we're trying to sell, if there's not an empty spot, there's not an empty spot.
But that begs the question as to what Scott's saying, is based on how the variance was written for this sign, if it truly.
But if somebody else fills it.
No, I know, I understand that. Well, so like if Tower Car Wash wanted two spots, then it would be filled, but there's no other place other than our lot that could put on, put up another sign.
That's my point.
Yeah, we need to have clarification on that.
Well, if we told them in the variance that there had to be a reserved spot on this sign for the piece of property we have for sale, that's who gets this one. I don't think that's.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the exact text of the variance ordinance to see exactly what it said, but that was the intention, is it was supposed to be reserved for this site because we had no other signage ability out there.
I think our question is, is do we pay for it or do we tie it to the sale of the property?
How imminent is the sale?
It's pending.
Are we holding the bag for like a couple of weeks here? Because I don't mind holding $13,000 for a couple of weeks if we're just about to.
Yeah, I'm working on some paperwork with the attorney right now on some things, so it's.
So this could be settled by our next meeting anyways.
Maybe the next meeting, but, you know, sometime in January perhaps, yeah.
What if the new business just.
Right, if they don't want it.
Yes.
What if the other, what if they can sell it for twenty grand and make a profit on it?
They will want signage, so.
Right. That's not going to happen.
But I still don't understand why we'd pay it.
We wouldn't.
Well, they're asking for us to pay it now because they're building the signs now.
Well, I, you know, I understand that, but, but we never agreed to that.
We never agreed that we were going to pay for it upfront, no.
They'd agree that we were.
Well, I wouldn't say ever. I mean, we talked about, you know, that if, if a user came and used that site, that that would be, you know, what we'd like to have is sign panels on those signs for our site. But I don't think, we never agreed that we're never going to pay for it, no.
But we never, but you said the user would use it and.
The user would use it, right. Now, the arrangement as to who's actually going to technically pay for, whether it's the city or the tenant, or, you know, if we sold the property, obviously the person that would buy the property would be paying for that, so.
Here's the thing, if we didn't have a potential buyer, which, the potential buyer is nothing more than that, a potential buyer.
Right.
They could go away tomorrow. I think not having the ability to put our property, whoever we sell our property to, to give them the ability to have sign space would be detrimental to the sale of our property. to give them the ability to have sign space would be detrimental to the sale of our property.
I agree.
Whether we pay for it now, or whether we, you can work it out where you pay for it when we sell the property, but we got to preserve that spot.
But we already did that in the variance process.
Believe so, but again, we'll have to verify the language in there, right.
I just, for an unbudgeted expense, when we have a potential buyer already for the property, and we didn't pay for Crash Champions, Tower Car Wash, Tuffy's, or Valvoline's sign, I don't think it's right that we would, like, say, buy this piece of property for us and we're throwing in a thirteen thousand dollar sign, because that's what you're kind of asking us to do.
No, I'm not.
No, you're not.
I'm saying preserve the spot. And the price of that spot that we're preserving, because we're already committed to being a participant in the sign, right?
Basically, yes.
We committed to that. So, now, we need to take that into consideration when we're selling the parcel of land that we're selling.
So, sell it for thirteen thousand dollars more?
Whether we add thirteen thousand dollars to what we're asking for, or whether we tell them they pay for it after they, however it works out, we've committed to participating in this sign.
The optics are not very business friendly.
I don't understand it that way.
I don't either.
Yeah, I mean, when we went through the variance process, they had a sign that was originally going to be smaller sign. We had asked them to make the sign larger so that there would be an additional tenant space available for whoever was ultimately going to build, develop, occupy the city property. That was our intention when variance was coming forward through the process.
The very last site that could be on that sign. There are no additional sites in that immediate area that could be on that monument.
There are no buildable sites that can be used for that purpose.
Okay.
So, that was at our direction?
Yes.
We direct people to do stuff all the time at their expense.
Yeah, we technically reserve a sign already. I think he's a good steward and a good neighbor. I don't know. I think he would be able to sell that spot to somebody else if somebody else came along, like that other building. But I, I don't know. I think we made the commitment already.
Anyone over there have any comments about it?
I think the guy that wants to buy that piece of property and put the building up that he saw is going to definitely need a sign for what he's going for.
Agreed. But should we pay for the sign, or should he?
Why don't, why don't we direct staff to go back and say, we have a prospective buyer, we're going to present them to buy it. And if they're like, no, we need, we're constructing, we need money now, then I think we put the money upfront and add it to the cost of the property. But if they're okay, we'll go ahead and we'll deal with the other guy, then let's do it that way.
Yeah, are they invoicing this? I mean, like, can we just throw this on our credit card and pay it thirty days? Is that like a thing?
We can pay it. I think Peggy and I had talked about it. There's, you know, we can, you know, we have funds that we can pay for it, so if we needed to.
So, see if we need to. But I agree. I mean, I don't think we run in there with a check, but I don't think we leave them on the hook if they're like, you told us to save it, now what do we do, you know?
Scott, what is the purchase price of the land? Do we know?
I don't know if I should disclose that in open session at this point.
That's fine.
But, but, yeah, we do have an offer for it, so.
Okay.
Can we talk to the buyer?
Yeah.
Potential buyer?
We can.
And figure out what they want to do? And if they're like, yeah, I'll kick the money in because this is, then it's pointless.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
I agree, Marty. I think that that's absolutely the right course of action, because if they say, we need a sign on Randall Road, we're willing to pay for the thirteen thousand dollar sign, because if you buy a building anywhere, it doesn't come with a sign.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and I think that's where it puts it on them. I mean, if they're going to back out, they're going to, they're going to back out one way or another, because they're still going to have to pay the city back, because we're not doing it out of the goodness. So, they're going to have to know that thirteen thousand is for that sign. Does that kill the deal or not? And just be upfront, negotiate in good faith, say, we've got the spot. Do you want to pay it now or later?
Agreed.
And keep in mind, it's for two signs. It's for the Randall and the Main sign, so there's two panels reserved, actually, so.
Great. Laura?
I just wanted to point out that in the April eighteen, twenty eighteen memo, it is specifically called out in the background that the City of Batavia owns the undeveloped property at twenty-one fifty Main Street. Staff requested that the applicant and the applicant agreed to include the space on each side of the sign for the exclusive use of the owner of this property.
Okay. But it doesn't say we have to pay for it upfront?
No.
We had no discussion with them about upfront payments.
Okay. So, then there's no, no reason to pay for it? So, I suppose that we should.
Unless the bill comes due.
Since you threw this to us, now I throw it to the rest of the committee. How do we want a direct staff? Because we're pretty split on what we should do here.
I'd like to give our city administrator the authority that we hired her to do, and that is make these types of decisions and not bother us with this thirteen thousand dollars.
This is a policy decision, Dave. Yes, it is.
No, it's not. The resolution's already been written for allowing the sign to be put up there. It's pretty well spelled out. We'll let them do their job and make this happen.
This is a thirteen thousand dollar unbudgeted expense, and we just finished passing the budget. This is a policy decision. Do we spend thirteen thousand dollars that we did that budget?
We agreed to it in principle.
Our city administrator's got, I think, twenty thousand dollars in her authority to spend without coming to the city council.
I don't think that the city administrator in community development would have brought to us, this to us if they didn't want city council to weigh in on it.
I just have a.
I think we need to tell the staff what they should do.
Marty?
Question on that, though? Because if we're talking about, I have a principal problem with it because it's unbudgeted. If then we say, they've got twenty thousand, you can do a lot of twenty thousand unbudgeted items going from here on forward, just to say, we trust you with twenty thousand. It's not a matter of trust or having the authority. This has no, it's not in the budget for them to spend. It's, it's just not. We have to give that permission. So, the clarification should be, go talk to the landlord, or the sign makers, go talk to our potential buyer, figure that out. And I think when we have those pieces, bring that back to us and let us make a decision.
I wholeheartedly agree. Anyone else have any comments about that? Scott, do you have direction?
Yeah, I think so.
Have any other questions of us about this?
No, I think the only other thing is that if, if you feel that the city administrator should have the authority to grant that additional, is that something that you want to give at this point? Assuming that we're not able to come to other discussions in terms with the sign folks. I'm just saying, you know, that that saves time and effort coming back, I guess.
Yeah, I guess this, to me, is a little weird, because I just pulled the ordinance up and read it. And number four in the section of what this apply, or how this is applied, is the operation and maintenance of the sign, including expenses for operation and maintenance, will be the responsibility of the Shopping Center Owner Association, which we are a member of until we sell that property. So, I don't know who represents us on that ownership group, but that's where that decision was made, to spend the money on this sign.
And that's, and that's part of the problem with this development, and that's, is that there is an owners' association, or administrative owner in this case, but there is no formal association. Crash Champions folks have been trying to reform an association, but it actually has not been formed where members are and people are paying dues and so on and so forth. So, that's part of why, if you, you know, what, about a year ago, we created the backup special service area to pay for all these things in case the owners did not. And if you remember also, that's how we got into the land sale with the Tower Car Wash, and that was our, part of our share of the paving of the, of the driveways and everything. So, it's been kind of a messy situation over there, to say the least.
So, if this one unpaid, our SSA would actually be the backstop for this that we'd be paying ourselves back for?
For maintenance, for maintenance, yeah.
All right.
But I think you have direction as far as principally. You know where we stand, but if we can get this pushed off.
Right. Yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk to the prospective buyers and the sign people and see what we can do.
No formal action taken on this?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Item number eleven, resolution eighteen dash one thirty dash R, budget amendment for health insurance premium. Alderman Etic.
Yes. The health and premium, the health insurance premium went up forty thousand dollars a month for the second half of two thousand and eighteen. And these premiums, along with the wellness program, will end the year sixty thousand over budget without an amendment. So, we are asked to provide, to approve resolution eighteen dash one thirty dash R, budget amendment to the health, for health insurance premiums of sixty thousand. Are there any questions?
Question, Lucy?
Yes.
Since we're already in the sixth month of two thousand, second half of two thousand and eighteen, how did we not know that it was increasing forty thousand dollars a month? Do we only pay semi-annual premiums?
So, as you may recall, December of two thousand sixteen, we switched over to the risk pool, IPBC. They gave us a nineteen-month rate lock guarantee, which took us through there. At the time that we were doing the budget, Gallagher is on a July-through-June premium. And at the time that they had made their forecast, based on what they had made recommendations, they only had two months of experience to base that off of, because it was such a large lead time for us. Typically, because we did not have any change in that first, first six months. So, it wasn't significantly higher, but it was a little bit higher than we had anticipated. And so, now, going forward, so we had to change July one to, it was about a six-point-eight percent, I believe it was, increase, which was a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. And then now, we are now on, on schedule now for us as an entity for a regular January one premium. And you won't see those, because we then have that budgeted into the process.
I think you're asking, why didn't we come to you in July or August?
Yeah.
And that is because we're obligated to pay it, and we were just waiting to see if anything else came in at the end? This is just a housekeeping item, so that when we report out at year end, we aren't over budget.
Can you clarify? And we may have discussed this before, but I don't remember. So, it's forty thousand extra per month?
That's what the premium increased in July.
Okay. So, why aren't we over more than sixty thousand?
We had anticipated there still might be some straggling in of self-insurance claims.
Okay, which we didn't.
Which we didn't. Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
We still do have one outstanding claim that we are waiting, but that's been expensed in a prior year for one particular claim that we're aware of. But we may need to do a cash transfer for that particular claim, and we'll bring that back to you at a later date.
Okay. Nick?
Do we, can we expect every six months there being an adjustment?
No, that was the part that Wendy was referring to.
Yeah, so, our initial change, they did a nineteen-month rate lock.
Right, but what's?
And then, and then they had done, then, so then we changed July one. And then, in order for us to get back on a fiscal year, or our, our calendar year, then January one, we had an increase, which we budgeted for January of nineteen.
Until you'll know. That's perpetual.
And so, now it'll always be January of that beginning of the year, so you won't see any mid-year changes.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Another question.
Susan?
When, you know, you and I talked in passing, Wendy, about lowering our insurance premiums, is I was going through the schedule of pay for Batavia versus Geneva in terms of insurance. Our insurance premiums are significantly higher, and you and I talked about that. And so, then we had a conversation about what can we do to lower them. And so, when will we have that discussion to see what we can do to lower insurance premiums?
So, as we've mentioned, we recently reinvigorated the Wellness Health Insurance Committee. We've met twice now, and we're having those conversations with the committee and exploring those options. The good thing is that we have the power of numbers with being part of IPBC. We're in the past as being solely self-insured. We didn't have a lot of flexibility to possibly offer different plan options at a lower cost. So, we're currently exploring those. And probably late summer-ish, fall, because we would have to have those locked in for IPBC into the next calendar year, we'll be bringing those things to you, because we'll have then the cost and what that looks like.
From a, from a city point of view, you and I had talked about incenting people to not be part of our group. I can't imagine that our group would want us to do that, because the more people you have in a group, it's normally better. So, how do you, how do you work on something like that?
Well, the good news with being, again, another positive of being part of IPBC, we are in a subpool, so that gives us some flexibility if our numbers go up and down, because we still then have the power of numbers. We're not solely based on our performance. We do get reports directly about our performance, but it's all pooled together. So, we do have some flexibility. You know, as you can imagine, there is some positives in not always insuring the whole group, because some of those people might come with high claims. So, if, you know, two working partners in a relationship, if they can get insurance at both places of employment, that can actually, in the long run, help lower our costs.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Would someone like to make a motion to recommend to council the approval of resolution eighteen dash one thirty dash R, budget amendment for health insurance premiums? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and yes, consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Okay. The last item we have then for any action would be ordinance eighteen dash eighty-one, elected official compensation. Alderman Etic.
Yes, it's, so it's that time, again, to consider whether we want to keep compensation as we have been keeping it for the last, I'm not sure how many years, over ten?
Twelve, I think.
Twelve, twelve years. So, whether we want to make changes or stay the same, basically.
Absolutely. So, there are four positions specifically that are spelled out in the ordinance. It's the mayor, the alderman position, the city clerk, and then the treasurer. In each one of those positions, the main reason, of course, is that the current ordinance is written with expirations. So, the positions have either recently expired or have expired. So, at a minimum, we need to renew the ordinance to make sure it's up to date. So, with that, I also attached that information for, as the committee to have a conversation in regards to compensation. And the current ordinance that's in there, there are no proposed changes, but based on your guys' discussion, absolutely, we could make those amendments. There are some changes in the ordinance that we would propose. Peggy and I have had some conversations. Just as you can see there, while there's no change in compensation, it's listed, for example, the mayor is listed differently than what it was listed before, and it's purely a payroll issue to make sure that he's paid correctly. I think it was listed as a monthly amount, and he gets paid in a regular pay cycle, so it's just listed out. So, we're, we're paying him correctly. We also would propose, unless you object, is to, unless there's a change date, to not place a date, an expiration date in there, unless there's an action to be made, so then there's never a chance of it expiring and just kind of the compensation not being active in the ordinance. And then additionally, there was a sentence added, as you may recall, if there's any changes to compensation for elected officials, it needs to happen based on state statute of a hundred and eighty days prior to an election. So, that's just listed in there, just as a reminder, that if there are ever any increases in the compensation, that we just know when they become effective and who it affects.
Any comments or questions, thoughts?
Just a couple grammatical things.
On page three, section 152, part B, it actually talks about any ordinance providing for a change in compensation for the mayor, under the...
Yes.
Under the council...
Peggy caught that for me as well, yeah, so I'll definitely make those changes.
And then on page five, committee membership, it says, "Vice Chair President to be agreed upon by toe," alderpeople instead of...
All right, thank you.
No other thoughts, comments, questions?
The semantics of this is if we did, let's say, vote in a raise tonight, everyone up here for election doesn't get it, it's that side that gets it first, right?
Then raises for everyone.
Right. Because we have to wait for the next election cycle before we can get paid.
Right.
Just checking.
Well, pensions then, too.
Oh, and healthcare.
I'm just checking to make, I'm just, I'm just checking to make sure our mobile stroke unit's working.
Car allowances?
Yeah.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to recommend to council, Ordinance 18-81, renewing the electric official's compensation?
So moved.
Package?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay.
Out of curiosity...
Do we wanna talk about that at the council meeting, that we're keeping it the same?
I don't know, somebody on the council should, I think.
Sure. Yeah, but I mean, you think it'd be a good idea to have that brief discussion?
Whenever, sure.
Sure.
That'd be about the only thing on the agenda. I know we're trying to keep that agenda short.
Right.
Okay, we'll keep it on the agenda then?
Yeah, is that really the only thing on the agenda?
What's that?
We also know that isn't consent.
I think the, was the way, I know, was the wage ordinance as well.
Wage ordinance is on there, too.
It actually might be good to talk about, just because as we saw, there are some misconceptions about what, what it does make, and that we do not get health benefits, or pensions, or anything else.
Yet.
Which, according to home rule, we should be crazy.
All right, let's move on to item number 14, project status. Or?
Yes, so just an update on the leaf and brush collection, that the tree leaf collection crew started on the west side, and they're making good progress. They still have one crew that will be on the east side Wednesday morning to finish up, just under, like, 20 quarts that they still have to collect, which are south of Pine Street. And then they hope to continue the progress on the west side throughout this week, and let's cross our fingers that the predicted winter precipitation avoids the area. Brush collection should be completed on the east side. Our contractor, Kramer, has started on the west side. The progress is kind of slow, just due to the sheer volume of material that is out there to be collected. And then we're hopeful that the leaf collection can be done by the end of this week, but we feel like probably the brush collection is going to go on into next week. Just an update, and Community Development received a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and the awarded funds were to assist with costs associated with abandoned property cleanup. So far, we've received, it was a $50,000 grant, and so far, we've received a little over $19,000 to assist us with those, so that's been a really good program for us to defray some costs that otherwise we would solely bear. Staff is continuing to review the revised submittal for the Winding Creek development, that's on the Landmark Farm property, that's behind Sam's Club, and this will be on a special plan committee meeting, plan commission meeting on December 12th, because due to the holiday season and quorum issues, the December 5th and 19th meetings were canceled and kind of consolidated into this December 12th meeting. Staff received plans for a spec industrial building on Lewis Fork Drive. This would be a 150,000-square-foot building, and we're reviewing the submittal at this time. Also, as you recall, John Happel was here, he had purchased the property on South Batavia Avenue, and utilizing the city's TIF Downtown Improvement and Facade Grant Program, he's completing the front facade and interior improvements to the second-floor apartments there at 129 South Batavia Avenue. That's the former Stash's barber shop, so work is really progressing there. In Public Works, a public open house was held for the Prairie Street Construction Project, which is scheduled for construction in 2020. And then also, people are noticing that the signage on the dam is being installed, and we expect that all but two signs will be installed by the end of this year. There are just two signs on the west side that can't be installed during the winter months, so those will go up next year, when the, when the weather clears. And other than that, just wanted to let you guys know, maybe you noticed, there's a little, there's a chair off to the side there. We are finally going to replace the deteriorating chairs that everyone's sitting in around the dais here. And just, you know, so you, you know, a chair of that nature, that, that costs a little under $400. And wow, that sounds like a lot to spend on a chair, but realize how many years, the better part of 15, 20 years, that the chairs here have to last. And while people maybe see meetings here that happen on BATV a couple of times per week, the truth is that meetings go on throughout days here, and there are meetings which are not televised that are held here, these, these chairs have to actually withstand a lot, so... And the chairs that you're sitting in right now have done a good service. So I look forward to that update.
But it fits my butt so well.
But it's probably cheaper than a OSHA hazmat claim.
These chairs were in place when I was sitting in the audience as a reporter, I remember these chairs from 20 years ago.
So it'll be a relatively inexpensive upgrade to our facilities here at City Hall.
Those look nice.
Anybody have anything else on the project status? Gary?
Just wanted to bring counsel up to speed on our emergency generator at this building. If anyone's been on that side of the riverside of the building over the last several weeks, you've noticed there's been a second generator set out there, because earlier this fall, a critter decided to make a temporary home in our backup generator, that didn't go so well. So he actually caused a lot of damage. We've been working with three different companies to come in and evaluate the damage, and identify scopes of repair, Steiner Electric, Rush Power Systems, and then Illini. Decided to move forward with Illini, they will make repairs onsite here by tearing things apart and then reassembling them. But I bring this to you because the total cost of their work is gonna be about $23,000. Right now, it'll come out of the Buildings and Grounds budget, but obviously, that's over $20,000, and it may necessitate a, probably likely will necessitate a budget amendment, which we'd have to bring back to you in January. But it's something we need to move forward on, being our backup generator, and we've been renting it, basically every day that that backup generator sits out there, we're paying rent on it. So we need to get it going and get our permanent backup generator fixed, and get the rental out of there. So that's, that's moving forward, just wanted to make you guys aware.
Any questions for Gary on that? Thank you, Gary. Anybody else have anything under the next item, which is other? Mayor, nothing? Was looking forward to some update. Last week you said, or a couple weeks ago, you said you'd had been downtown with two other...
I've been on TV, so I'm...
Oh, I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Oh, today?
Yeah? Yes, I did.
You did?
Yeah, I saw both on a, I think it was a Twitter feed, and then also pictures, kind of standing off to the side, at least you got a nice red tie on, so.
They didn't show me talking, then.
I did not see that. So what were we talking about? Gas taxes.
We had a, we had a, we had a meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Executive Committee along with Mayor Manuel.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, to talk about the capital program for the state government that is, they haven't had a state capital transportation plan since 1990. And we think it's time that, you know, the boys and girls in Springfield get on with something. And we didn't make any pointed recommendations, although there were some suggestions about gas taxes and fees on license plates and all this other, we didn't come out with any specific recommendations, but we think it's time that something like that be done. And my role was to talk a little bit about the history of big projects in Chicagoland, starting with the Tollway in the 1950s, and then the creation of the RTA in the 1970s, and the modernization of O'Hare Airport in the 90s. And, you know, those are all great projects, that were all highly controversial, quite honestly, there was a lot of people for them or against them. And so they've all been accomplished, and they've brought a lot of progress to us, but there's a lot out there now that needs to be done, as far as specifically on the transit side with the rails and the buses, we've got some great ideas, but they gotta have some backbone to do it. And the train system in our area is way, way aged, and it needs, much of it needs to be replaced. So we're just a voice in the wilderness, making noise here about that the state legislature really's gotta do something if Chicago's gonna retain its economic competitive edge in, in the greater American scene. And that was kind of the message, so.
Okay, anybody else have anything on others? Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Missler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourned, 8 o'clock.